It is now four o'clock and this meeting of the Cochise County Planning and Zoning Commission is called to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
I'd like to read the ground rules now. Welcome to this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. There are a few ground rules. Please turn off cell phones or silence your ringers. Also, please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If you are attending in person and you wish to speak, fill out a speaker request form and give it to the planning staff. Forms are on the table outside next to the door. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. If you are attending online and wish to speak, raise your hand in the team's chat and provide your name, address, and agenda item number you would like to address. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. Please mute your microphone until called. In-person speakers must come to the podium when called by the chair. Use the microphone to capture your comments. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three commissioners are from cities, at least six commissioners are from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono. A quorum is five commissioners. Special use dockets. Special use dockets are approved by the commission. A majority vote passes a motion, a tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. Appeals of special use decisions are heard by the Board of Supervisors. Appeal procedures can be found on the county's website. For additional assistance, contact Development Services. For other docket decisions, those other than special use requests result in a recommendation forwarded by this commission to the Board of Supervisors. A majority vote passes a motion, a tie vote fails. To voice an opinion regarding a recommendation, you may attend the Board of Supervisors' public We observe the following time limits. Each speaker is limited to three minutes for call to public, 10 minutes for applicants, three minutes for supporters or those opposed, and five minutes for applicant rebuttal. Roll call. Mr. Limbach?
Present.
Mr. Montgomery?
Present.
Mr. Watkins?
Present.
Mr. Is Mr. Young with us?
Mr. Young, are you with us online?
Is Mr. Marzky also absent? Seems like. Mr. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Fickett?
Present.
Mr. Saunders?
Present.
Sherida Pugh is present. This is the time we review the previous month's minutes and vote for approval. Do I have any comments or corrections for last month's minutes? Hearing none. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Abstaining.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Marzky is abstaining. And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Thank you so much. The minutes from last month are approved. The motion carries. This is a time for call to public. Pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute 38-431.01H, this is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commission's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. I do have one speaker request form. Melissa Avant. Thank you. Please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
And I am just standing in front of you today in support of docket number nine. Unfortunately, I can't make it to the whole meeting, so thank you for providing this opportunity. The accessory dwelling units, the ADUs, and the accessory living quarters would really help individuals that have either disabled children or family members for that area. And I definitely support this and hope you guys pass it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on call to public? Anyone online? Mr. Taylor?
Anyone else online that would like to speak?
The first item is docket SUB-25-02. It is an applicant-initiated request for a nine-lot subdivision. The staff and applicant have jointly requested this item to be tabled to the September 10 meeting. Can I get a motion for that?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
I move that we table it till September 10.
A second. Thank you. Is there any discussion about tabling this? Hearing none. Take a voice vote, please. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none. The motion to table passes.
And Madam Chair, just to be clear, that would be, that item will come back to the commission on September the 10th.
Thank you for the clarification to the motion. September 10th. The next item tonight is a rezone 25-09, Desert's, I'm sorry. I have this twice in my stack. No, I was correct. Rezone 25-09, rezone at Desert Sky Subdivision. Applicant requests rezoning RU2 to RU4. The applicant is Shane Harmon. Are you present?
Mr. Harmon?
Online.
Thank you, sir. We'll get back to you.
Thank you. I'd like to call for a motion to approve this docket.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
I move to recommend approval of docket RZ-25-09 to the Board of Supervisors without special conditions, rezoning tax parcel 404-02-027 from RU2 to RU4. The factors of approval constituting the findings affect.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, your report on this matter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the staff recommendation for RZ-2509, request to downzone property from RU2 to RU4. The applicant is Shane Harmon. The property is located within Desert Sky Subdivision on Mojave Street. That'd be tax parcel 404-02-027. Again, the current zoning is RU2. The applicant would like to rezone the property to RU4. Plan designations are rural. There is no existing use of the property, and the applicant proposes residential development using the county's owner-builder program. Property is located within Desert Sky Subdivision, which was platted back in the early 1970s, which would be considered an antiquated subdivision. And it's located approximately 1.5 miles east of Highway 191. The original plat was mostly five-acre lots, was later rezoned by the county to RU2. There have been about eight parcels within the subdivision who, that have been rezoned by the county to RU4. Couple of drawn images. This would be viewing to the north with the subject property outlined in red. And viewing to the east. The applicant has provided a concept plan showing a single-family residence. A couple of points to make. The owner-builder program requires a zoning of four acres and a minimum site area of four acres. RU4 does allow accessory structures prior to establishing a residence, as well as temporary occupancy of an RV during construction with a concurrent temporary use permit. Storage of up to two RVs is permissible. RVs can be occupied up to six months with a temporary use, and stays of 15 days or less do not require a permit. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors to evaluate rezoning requests. As with most downzones, nine factors are applicable to this request. Staff finds that the request does comply with applicable factors. The proposed residential use is compatible with the rural residential growth pattern of the area. The rezone does reduce allowed residential density, and staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners. Further, staff has not identified any factors not in favor. Staff noticed the docket publishing a legal ad posting the property and mailing notices out between 16 and 23 July. Staff mailed 10 notices. Again, not receiving any response, or receiving no response. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket RZ-2509. We are available for your commission, for the commission's questions, and the applicant is present online.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. This is the time for you to speak. Please state your name and address. You have 10 minutes if you'd like.
Everything was pretty much applied by Mr. Taylor. We just plan on moving to Arizona to the property within the next three years and would like to build our home there. It could get approved.
Mr. Harmon, does that conclude your comments?
Yes.
Thank you very much. This is the time for the public to either support or oppose. Is there anyone wishing online to speak to this matter? I have no statements for in-house. Hearing none. The public hearing is closed, and this now is the time for commission discussion. Do you have any questions for the applicant or staff?
I have one brief comment.
Mr. Montgomery?
To staff on page 12 currently before us. That is a spectacular photo. Very, very happy with that. Thank you.
Oh, Madam Chair, I have one for Mr. Harmon. The storage with the lean-to, I don't know if that's a shipping container, but what is, is that going to be for storage with the lean-to? To the left of the driveway?
The container will be mostly storage. And then we'll have a room for solar. The lean-to will be for RV coverage, and then vehicles parked under the roof.
Carport.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Taylor, your recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the factors in favor, staff recommends forwarding docket RZ-2509 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without special conditions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor to approve RZ-25-09. I would like to call for the vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye, to approve.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. This item passes. It will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors' meeting dealing with this docket. Thank you. Moving on, RZ-25-10, Highway 80 commercial property. Applicants request rezoning RU4 to general business. Alfonso Munoz, are you present? Thank you, sir. Mr. Taylor, your report. Oh, I'm sorry. We need to call for the, thank you. Thank you. I heard you. Can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend approval of docket RZ-25-10 to the Board of Supervisors without special conditions, rezoning tax parcel 408-11-009 from RU4 to GB. The factor is in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Now it's Mr. Taylor's turn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the staff presentation for docket RZ-2510. An applicant initiated request to rezon property from RU4 to GB. Again, the applicant is Alfonso Munoz. The property is located on Highway 80 west of Douglas. That would be tax parcel 408-11009. Again, the request is to rezon the property to GB. Plan designations are B and developing, and GB is a consistent zoning district with those plan designations. The property is currently undeveloped, and the proposed use is undetermined, but it will be obviously a business use. Property is, again, the property is located along Highway 80, approximately two miles west of the city of Douglas. The property is RU4 and surrounded by other RU4 properties that have been undeveloped. Property total is about 26 acres. You may, to the lower left, you will see some industrial zoning there. That would be the recent, Ardent rezoning that we saw in anticipation of the port. There is GB zoning to a quarter mile to the east as well as half a mile to the west. Couple of drawn images here. This would be viewing to the south. And this image is viewing west. Closest residential property is located across Highway 80. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors to evaluate rezonings. One factor does not apply, and that would be the requirement for a concept plan. Since we do not have an identified user, end-user or use, we do not have a concept plan to show the commission. 14 factors are applicable to the downzone, and as you can see, being an undeveloped property, future development will be subject to the applicable standards at the time of development. Factors in favor: The request does comply and will comply with applicable factors through the permitting process. Commercial uses are appropriate along major arterials, highways, and freeways. There are no adjacent residential uses, and staff has not received any opposition. Again, the only factor not in favor was that we don't have an end-user identified, and we don't have a concept plan. The applicant did mail letters back on 12 December. Staff executed the public notification process between 18 and 23 July, mailing six notices. I did receive one phone call inquiry, but no responses in favor or opposition. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket RZ-2510. We are available for the commission's questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Munoz, it's your turn. Your address, please.
My name is Alfonso Munoz. My address is 523 Grace, and I'm also a real estate agent and owner of Abbott Realty. My office location is 541 East 10th Street in Douglas, Arizona, 85607. And I'm here to respectfully request a rezoning to my property as a support, as a new commercial port, as I am aware that all the commercial properties on the north side of Highway 80. So I would like to have that option to be able to provide general business and on that area, and it will be strictly for a resale. So at this moment, I do not have a plan, but that will be, hopefully, if it gets rezoned to general business, they'll be at, you know, the developer's, you know, whatever idea he has in mind. But the thing is for me to just have that option for potential people that are looking for general business in that area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now is the time for the public hearing, for comments from other persons, for or against. I have no speaker forms. Is there anyone online? Hearing none. The applicant can respond, but since there were no comments, do you waive your time to respond? Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Commission discussion. Is there any questions for the applicant or staff? Again, hearing none. Mr. Taylor, your recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the factors in favor, staff recommends approval, forwarding docket RZ-2510 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without special conditions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The motion is open for, I'm sorry, the motion is up, and we can take a vote at this time. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimously approved. Congratulations. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors dealing with this docket. Next is RZ-25-11, SunSites Number Two, Quail Pass Drive. Applicants request rezoning from SR43 to SR174. Luis Manuta, are you present? Thank you, sir. We'll be with you in a minute. I'd like to call for the motion to approve this docket.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
I move to recommend approval of docket RZ-25-11 to the Board of Supervisors without special conditions, rezoning tax parcel 117-02-284B from SR43 to SR174. The factors of approval constituting the findings of fact.
And second?
I'll second that.
Go with Mr. Montgomery. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Limbach, for having those sample motions ready. Mr. Taylor, your report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this is the staff presentation for docket RZ-2511. An applicant initiated rezoning request to downzone property from SR43 to SR174. The applicant is Lou Manuta. Property is located at 751 West Quail Pass Drive in SunSites Number Two. That would be tax parcel 117028284 Bravo. Again, the requested zoning is SR174. The growth area is D, rural areas. The Sulphur Springs Valley Plan identified it as green space agriculture way back when, when that plan was adopted, the area plan. The existing use is residential, and the proposed use is residential within a permanent primary dwelling with an accessory living quarter. And the property is located in SunSites Number Two, approximately four miles west of Highway The property is zoned SR43, as are most parcels within SunSites. SunSites was platted back in the early 1960s and is an antiquated subdivision. The commission will be familiar with the SunSites term as we brought multiple applications forward for individuals who have combined several lots and wish to have that zoning with a minimum site area of four acres. In this case, the request is to allow the use of a park model as an accessory, accessory living quarters, which is allowed per state statute on parcels of three acres or more. This first drawn image is viewing to the south with the subject property outlined in red. And to the southeast, the property is surrounded on three sides by streets. The applicant has provided a plan showing existing residential structures and the proposed location of the ALQ. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors to evaluate rezoning requests, and as with most downzones, nine factors are applicable to this downzone, with all factors complying. Staff finds that the request complies with the applicable factors. The request is still compatible with rural residential growth pattern in SunSites. The downzone will also reduce the allowed residential density. Factors not in favor: Staff has received opposition from nearby property owners. Staff executed the public notification process between July 16th and 23, mailing notices, posting the property and publishing a legal ad. Let's say that staff mailed 26 notices. The commission did have access to the comments and opposition. One of the opposing comments did not offer any justification for their opposition. One of the other comments was to, quote, "If approved, this action would set a precedent that could have a negative impact on my rights to build on a smaller one-acre lot and could impact my property values in a negative manner." We would find that the main impact on developing smaller lots is the cost of development. This is not intended, well, it was intended, but it no longer has taken on the character of a half-acre to one-acre development. This is clearly a rural residential development pattern at this point. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket RZ-2511. We are available for the commission's questions, and as you're aware, Madam Chair, the applicant is present.
Thank you. Mr. Manuta, you have 10 minutes. Your address, please.
Yes. Excuse me. It's 751 West Quail Pass Drive in Pierce. Well, I would like to begin by thanking the members of Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the Development Services staff, for this opportunity to be able to testify on our rezoning request from SR43 to SR174. My name is Lou Manuta, and by way of background, my wife and I relocated to Pierce in 2020 when we moved on to four one-acre adjacent parcels just to the east of the Cochise stronghold. In addition to our names, our adult son and daughter were on the deed as well, all as joint owners with right of survivorship. Over the next few years, we acquired five additional adjacent parcels, now totaling approximately 10 acres, and all are currently zoned as SR43. And earlier this year, the nine parcels were consolidated into a single parcel in anticipation of seeking the zoning change. There's a single 1,000-square-foot residential dwelling on the consolidated parcel, that that's our home, and we have a private well that was dug in 2020. All four of our names are on the deed for the consolidated parcel, once again as joint owners with right of survivorship. This request is being made because our daughter, who is a deeded owner of the property, is having a tiny house on wheels constructed, which is 34 feet by 10 feet, which, as you know, under the Cochise County zoning regulations, meets the definition of a park model RV. As a result, in order to place the tiny house on our property, the zoning has to be changed in order to accommodate the tiny house as an accessory living quarter or an ALQ. We had photos included with our application, and they show a beautiful home that is on the 400 square feet. It will have a permanent foundation after the wheels are removed, and will have connections to the principal dwellings, existing utility services, a water well, and septic system. And the ALQ has its own self-contained solar power system, and they're going to have their own exterior propane tank installed as well. As Mr. Taylor noted, the applicable factors to be considered weigh toward approval, and there were no factors identified that would change that outcome. So in summary, the tiny house we would like to place on our property will be compatible with existing development on neighboring blocks that contain single-family dwellings, barns, utility buildings, horse pens, et cetera. The SunSites area was intended to be medium density, but has been rural density for decades. Therefore, the proposed rezoning from SR43 to SR174 is consistent with current usage. Accordingly, approval of the rezonings, or our daughter can place her tiny house as an ALQ on our property, will enhance the rural neighborhood in which we reside. Thank you for this opportunity to present our rezoning proposal, and I look forward to any questions you may have.
Thank you. The public hearing on this matter is now open. I have no speaker request forms. Mr. Taylor has already read two opositions into the record. Is there anyone online that would like to speak for or against this matter? Hearing none. Would you like to waive your time to rebut, Mr. Manuta?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hearing is closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Questions of the applicant or staff? Hearing none. Mr. Taylor, your recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, based on the factors in favor, staff recommends forwarding docket RZ-2511 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval without special conditions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The motion to approve RZ-25- Thank you. The motion to approve RZ 2511 is open. It's time for the vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye, to approve.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. This item will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Any person not agreeing with this action should attend the Board of Supervisors meeting dealing with this docket. Congratulations, Mr. Manuta. The next docket is SU 25-16 by Summit Locations. The applicant requests this item be tabled until the September 10th meeting. Is there a motion to table?
Madam Chair, I move we table this item to September 10?
10.
20 or 25?
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Is there any discussion on this tabling? No questions? Take a vote. Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
And Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. This motion is tabled to September 10th. We'll do the same thing again. Docket SU 25-17 by Summit Locations. The applicant is requesting this item be tabled until the September 10th meeting. And to quote them, "This will allow us, the applicant, to better prepare for in-person attendance and adjust our plans as needed." Can I get a motion for the tabling?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Saunders?
Table it.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Is there any discussion of this tabling? Hearing none? Let's take a vote. Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
And Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Thank you. We will see you in September.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just to confirm, September 10th.
Yes, thank you. The next item is docket SU 25-18, Wild Horse Guest Lodging. The applicants are Mario and Angela Robles. Are you present? Thank you. I need a motion to approve docket SU 25-18.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Limbach?
I move to approve docket SU 25-18 with conditions of approval recommended by staff. The factor is in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Montgomery, thank you. This opens the docket hearing. Mr. Taylor, your report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the staff presentation for docket SU 25-18. A special use authorization request to allow guest lodging, special events, as well as outdoor recreation. Applicants are Mario and Angela Robles. Property is located at 1819 2044 Wild Horse Place in 2565 Ocatillo Road. This would be tax parcels 20828001 November, 001 Papa, and 001 Romeo. The property is zoned RU4. Current plan designations are rural. Current use is residential. Again, the proposed use is an effective multipurpose venue that allows guest lodging, events, and recreation. Property is located approximately four and a half miles north of Benson. Again, the property is located within an area. It has an established rural residential development pattern. There are approximately five adjacent residential properties and about 10 residences within a quarter mile. Property owners supplied a site plan. There's actually a couple of slides here. This slide shows the existing chapel and the proposed location of the new event center to the left, as well as parking, and some of the guest lodging units, which would be to the east of the chapel. The second schematic shows the existing animal pens, as well as pastures, arenas, and areas that will be used for agricultural purposes, which, and these uses are allowed in RU4 anyway. To summarize the project, the property's total about 108 acres. It is a residential property with previous equestrian boarding and training. There are multiple residences on the property and numerous accessory structures with features, including barns, stables, pens, tack rooms, garages, and natural ponds. Ever After Ranch, special events, weddings, private events, corporate retreats. Again, guest lodging with tiny homes, guest casitas, clamping, and a trend towards agritourism, farming, which would again be allowed in RU4. And then a gathering hall, repurposing of existing structures, such as the church with wading pools, and the creation of a new reception building or event center. This first image is, the property is highlighted in yellow. This would be viewing to the southeast. This would be viewing to the north with Ocatillo Road to the left. This is another property approximately viewing to the east. And some miscellaneous photos of the property. I think these are the property. There are some adjacent properties, and I don't think I caught those in these photos. But just to give the commission an idea of how heavily vegetated the property is and the number of structures that are on the property currently that will be repurposed into the venue. Section 2.48 of the zoning regulations identifies 10 factors to evaluate special use requests. Eight factors apply to this application. I would like to note that the current comprehensive plan designation is rural residential. Rural residential would be an expected low-density development pattern on parcels of two acres or more. Under the current, with the current property's acreage, 25 dwelling units would be permissible with or without a plat. Intense development not serving area residents may not be appropriate in some areas. The comp plan also encourages outdoor recreation opportunities as well as tourism. The property is located within the Trace Alamos Area Plan, and I do apologize for not including that reference in the slides. The plan also identifies future land use as rural residential, again, maintaining a very rural residential or low-density development pattern. Would like to, if I may, Madam Chair, read the vision statement from the plan, just to add some context.
Yes, please.
Vision statement for the Trace Alamos Area Plan states, "In the year 2020, the Trace Alamos communities will maintain a rural quality characterized by quiet peacefulness, neighborliness, and beauty of the rural environment and large lot sizes. The community will maintain a trail network while protecting wildlife pathways, green open spaces, and dark night skies. New development will contribute to this vision and will honor the rich ranching history of the area and will preserve historic sites and trails." Staff finds that the application complies with the applicable factors. Agritourism, boutique lodging, and equestrian facilities are customary rural activities that support the intent of rural zones to allow diversified land uses and preservation of open space. Property is currently developed with residences, accessory structures, and infrastructure, minimizing the need for new disturbances or strain on county services. Factors not in favor, as referenced previously, this property, these properties are adjacent to multiple single-family residences, and staff has received opposition from nearby property owners. And the commission does have the most recent public input we've received, as well as the applicant's responses to some of those comments. The applicant mailed applicant letters as required by the zoning regulations on 17 June, and staff noticed the application between 16 and 23 July. Madam Chair, Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket 25-18. Special use authorization request to allow guest lodging, events, and outdoor recreation. We are available for the commission's questions, and the applicant is present. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This is the time for the applicant's statement. Mr. or Ms. Robles, you have 10 minutes. What is your address currently?
Our current, my name is Angela. This is Mario.
Mario.
Our current address is 7569 South Carlisle Avenue in Tucson, Arizona. All right, thank you for the slides. We, this first slide is just a general overview of what our vision for Ever After Ranch is. And most of these items we've gone over in introducing the proposed special use. The next. Ever After Ranch is being designed to be a small-scale wedding venue, an event for retreats with 15 guest lodging units. Flower farm and beekeeping specialty crops. There are, the property was originally designed as an equestrian property. We will offer also equestrian services, chapel, and community garden. And we just hope to enrich what is already there. There, this is a very beautifully built property. Lots of years of hard work and dedication have gone into preserving it the way that it is, and we hope to continue that for many years to come. Some of the information in the site layout show, the event venue is in the furthest southeast corner of the property away from all neighbors. We are improving the dual lane, the entrance to be a dual lane to help for traffic control, mitigation of any traffic issues that might come up. And then we do have an emergency exit to the north, which is a second entrance now. 100% of the parking will be onsite, and our layout basically shows what structures we're going to be repurposing. We do have plans to build the two structures as far as the event center and chapel. The chapel, but everything else is repurposed and reused as is. That slide you have seen, those are our plans. You can see some of the crops, some of the vegetation, and the orchard?
Orchards are above the parking in the top left corner. We got time on doing some solar canopy parking area to help mitigate with energy usage and provide shade. Obviously, it gets pretty warm here, so sort of open, open space parking, but we have about five acres of parking there.
That's also, I'm sorry, that's also away from entry gates or main roads, so that way it's not an eyesore on, you know, any of the largest of the gatherings that we can have. We're hoping to keep them away from main roads, neighbors, and mitigate the sound with the buildings and the way that they're being constructed.
So next to the event center, see, we have trees, orchards as well to help mitigate block any kind of noise. The plan is to keep the noise within the building. Even for outdoor events, 10 o'clock, we're supposed to end noise at 10 o'clock.
Following some of these slides, we're going to show you a one-minute video, so I want to make sure we save time for that. It shows a plan of a similar concept out in Texas. Our site plan and our use for this area is tranquil. It's quiet. I know that when we say event center, we say weddings, we say events. It sounds like there's hundreds of guests and people that are coming, but that, those are not the kind of events that we will be holding. These are peaceful, to bring people together, to encourage outdoor activities, encourage children to be learning some of rural life lessons. Also with weddings, you know, I personally have never been to a wedding that is obsessive or excessive in sound. They're, they're very classy, very elegant events that are being planned.
No concerts, nothing that's extreme noise. It's all corporate events, you got gatherings, nothing major.
Our next slide shows the
Kind of more than entire property. So down here in the far right corner is where most of the events are going to happen, down where there was this pond and parking. And you can see all the neighbors are pretty far away, so we try to find the best furthest location away from any other residents.
Then we do have the agricultural fields. We plan for wildflowers, a community garden, saffron.
Lavender.
Lavender, just, just fields that beautify but also bring value to the ranch itself. Anything on that?
No, next slide, just going to show us already, it's already zoned agricultural. The rest of everything is residential, but that just kind of shows a brief glimpse of of a property breakup.
Addressing some of the community concerns prior to hearing them, we, we've, you guys have copies of the letters that we have responded to, each individual one, as we received them in just the last few days. But outdoor events with music are moved indoors by 10:00 PM. That goes along with the sound regulations that are already in place for that area. Monsoon is designated as our off-season. Although there are still events and happenings on the ranch, it's not as heavy as what we would consider our, our busy season. We are from Tucson originally, so we are very familiar, and electrician's by trade, so we
Electrical contractor.
We're very familiar with dark sky compliant lights and, and what you have to do to preserve that. Some of the events that we are having on the ranch include stargazing and telescope nights, so we would need that on that property. We, trash is to be professionally removed and road grading. We are also purchasing the excavation company, an excavating company, and we are offering to partner with the county for the dirt road maintenance.
And fire mitigation, defensible space, just make sure the area is always kept up and clean, trees are trimmed, and just kind of keep mitigating any kind of potential wildfires.
Some of the, some of the information in the report from the county shows our water capacity, our registered wells, what we plan for the event and guests. Our traffic volume is lower than other area operations and the, the natural vegetation that's going to be used to deflect some of the noise if any at all is created above current levels. You can go ahead and skip that one, and then we can go ahead and play the video.
Yeah, this is pretty much a concept of what we're going to build out.
Some of the items in here are not applicable to our plan, but very general concept. The pond that you're seeing in the video and that we propose in our plan is a clay and regenerative pond. It's not like a swimming pool or something that needs to be constantly filled. There are plants on, what are they called? Like the aqua plants?
Yeah, to help the, the
That will naturally clean the pond. It's, it's a wading pond, so it's not meant to have, you know, sport activities and things. But paddle boarding maybe and, and some very low impact and quiet activities on the pond.
And this is just to bring in tourism, people that want to have that ranch experience with the animals and help pick some crops and just enjoy kind of a tranquil experience. We actually visited that ranch and noise was minimal. There was about 100 people on site, and you couldn't even hear anybody. And they had plenty of sites, and their site was only 50 acres. This is 108, so we definitely don't see any issue noise.
We're open to questions and concerns, and hopefully the letters that we've put together have kind of answered some of those for our neighbors who have concerns, and we look forward to answering some of those questions.
Thank you. We may call you back up. Stay, stay close. This is the public portion where we hear comments from other persons. Three minutes or less. Number one is Robert Bray. Please state your name and address, and then three minutes.
Yes, my name is Robert.
Yes, my name is Robert Bray, B R A Y, my address is seventeen fifty-five Rancho Vestasal Road. I want to bring to your attention, number one, the applicant, is he the owner of the property? I want you to give that a little thought and why is the property owner not asking for a special use permit? Okay, we go through there for a little bit, but they talk about the noise. I live ten miles away from town, the train goes by, we hear the train. So to sit there and say that they're going to eliminate noise, in what direction are they going to point those speakers to go to? You can get behind a gun and point that gun in the direction and behind me, north, south, east or west, you're going to hear the noise. They're not going to suppress that noise in any way, so I don't know what foolishness they're talking about, about suppressing noise. The special use permit, number one, is not allowed in an RU four because number one, it's going to be interfering with the possibility. And it states in your own regulations, provided that they meet certain criteria, is compatible with the surrounding land usage and does not negatively infect the community or the environment that is in existence. Okay, I'll go back to this other deal that I talked about.
You need to speak.
Okay, and, and the other thing I just pointed out is why is the, is the applicant the owner of the property? He states his address, he lives in Tucson, Arizona, does he live at this location? And why I ask you is, is there a possibility that this applicant is in the process of trying to buy this location? Okay? And if this is denied, is there a possibility that the sale from the, from the land owner, which is Mr. Wilder, I guess is his name? He's the owner of the property, so are they in negotiations to sell? And if you make the wrong decision to say no, is there a possibility that this sale doesn't take place? So why I bring this to your attention is that now you become a real estate transaction. If you vote yes, the transaction goes through. If you vote no, there's a possibility that this particular applicant requesting a special use permit, he says no more, I'm not here to buy the property. So I just want you to give that a lot of thought there. The other thing is that the proposed special use is zoned as a rural residential. Is that time I'm up?
That's your time, thank you.
Boy, I didn't even get to begin.
Went fast, didn't it?
Can I come back?
No, sir, thank you, we got your point. Mr. Kevin Roberts?
Speak in here, my name is Kevin Roberts, I reside at twenty-five thirty-two North Alcatel, right across the road from what they're wanting to do. I, at this, at this time, I oppose it. What they're trying to do will cause a bunch of noise. Nothing against you guys. Everybody that lives out there, lives out there for a reason, it's agriculture. It's rural, it's quiet. We just got rid of Double R Ranch, they brought in for their horse rides. Amount of traffic. They're gone, the traffic, the noise and everything's gone. You can actually walk down the road if you have to. If your cattle's out, you don't have to worry about them getting hit because the residents that do live down there understand there's going to be livestock out on the road. Bringing that many people in at a time, they don't know where they're going. They're on their Google Maps and they're sending them down driveways and everywhere else. They do it whether there's an event center or they're looking for their friend's house. That's going to cause problems, somebody's going to get hurt. Another thing, as a former highway maintenance supervisor for Cochise County, they're saying they're going to go coincide with the county to help maintain the road. That can't happen. One reason is there's no right of way from the end of the pavement to the rest of the county maintenance. All the county legally has is the right to maintain that road. They cannot do any capital capital improvements, all they're allowed to do is maintain that road. I know I got a minute left, but if I can give my minute to somebody else, I'd like to do that, but and like I said, it has nothing against you guys, nothing against you Rex. If, there, there's just too much unknown right now for me personally. So, I, like I said, I had both.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. We move on to Ann Roberts. We're going to give everybody a chance to speak, so we don't need to be sharing minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson and Commissioner, thank you for listening to us. So I am Ann Roberts, I live at twenty-five thirty-two North Alcatia Road, his wife, right across the street. We own a hundred and sixty acres directly across the street from that project. And I am in opposition at this point in time. I, I do believe that they have a very nice project or property over there as it is now, but there's hardly anything going on over there. There's no way, if you, I mean, even looking at the beautiful view or slideshow that they showed you, that is clearly a commercial business. That is not something that is appropriate for a special use permit in a rural area where there are very few residences, and as a matter of fact, that building that you see right there is the church. My driveway is right across the street from that. And there's no way that having an event center right there is going to not have a negative impact on our property. So, I think, and it would have been helpful. Well, you saw the pictures of the casitas, we don't even know how many casitas, fifteen casitas, but if casitas are holding two people, one person, I mean, we know there are going to be more than one, right? Four people, six people, that could be hundreds of people there at one time. And I think you ought to also take into consideration that that's going to be a real, I'm a prosecutor for Benson Justice Court, that's going to be a real stressor on the sheriff's department if there's a public safety issue out there, we are eight miles out of town. And how many miles off the dirt? Two?
Three.
One, so there's public safety concerns, not only with fire, but with, with the sheriff's department, the noise. I, I, I'm in opposition, I think it's a terrible idea. Maybe if they had a smaller project, something that was a little more, I, I get the nature part, but there, there is way too much commercialism that's involved with what they've shown us. And it really should be rezoned to general business for that type of project. Thank you.
Thank you, next is Jonathan Wall.
Jonathan Wall, and I'm at twenty-five hundred North Alcatia Road. We're just, just down the road from there. I'm concerned about it for all, all the same reasons that they said, then a lot larger in capacity than what would be even reasonable out there, we're out in the middle of nowhere and bringing all that out there. Another concern for me is taxing on our water supply. Artesians are already running dry, all the neighbors around there, and you add that extra water. I mean, that's, that's a concern. I'm, I'm obviously opposing it because of the size of it, fifteen casitas, the extra traffic. And you, we, we walk down the road and you can hear people on that property, you know? You can hear people on other properties that, if they're having parties and weddings and such or whatever, it really would totally destroy the area, I think. So, that's, that's all I got to say about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Laurel Gigglin? I'll let you say your name properly and your address, please, you have three minutes.
I'll gladly say it properly, so it's Laurel Gagline. I live at one nine nine West Lightning Lane in Benson, Arizona, a few miles north of this proposed property, and I strongly oppose this. We don't want it to turn into another Ramsey Canyon situation. So as you've heard, we just recently got rid of the Dude Ranch, thank God, and we have a semblance of peace in our neighborhood. And as several people have already mentioned, it's peaceful and it's quiet and our traffic has decreased significantly. And as this gentleman spoke out the Trace Alamos area plan, that's what we want in our area and our community. And it specifically states, as he read, that is characterized by quiet peacefulness, neighborliness, the beauty of a rural environment and large lot sizes. And this proposed business would go against the quietness, the peacefulness and the large lot sizes with what they're planning to bring to this property with all fifteen extra buildings, event centers. And I have a discrepancy with their application. So on number ten, the volume of traffic, they state that it'll be moderate traffic and as the slides show, they said it'll be small scale. And they said fifty to a hundred and fifty cars on average weekly. And I say bull crap, I used to be an on-call event banquet server all throughout college and weddings and quinceañeras and business parties, they who's to say they're, they're just going to keep it small? I mean, they can easily be a hundred, a hundred and fifty, two hundred people at an event, a wedding, which would bring the numbers easily if they booked Friday, Saturday and Sunday during, you know, the busy time like spring, fall, winter, when we have lots of events in Arizona, that could easily be three hundred to five hundred people on average a week. If they rented out all these spaces, they have, you know, full scale operation going. Our Cochise County infrastructure cannot handle this, our neighborhood cannot handle this. I appreciate what they want to bring, but it's not appropriate for our area, for Trace Alamos. And we ask you to please help to keep the peacefulness, the semblance of peace that we just reattained in our neighborhood and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian Gagline? Thank you. Loretta Gagline?
Loretta Gagline, twenty-seven eleven North Alcatia Road. I'm in opposition of this special use permit, as I feel that it should be a maybe a rezone for a subdivision with all these homes going in, tiny homes, subdivision. Or perhaps, as Ann said, a general business because of the scale it's at. It's not a special use, it's, it's something bigger than that. And I hope you deny this and have them resubmit something other than a special use permit because that will open a door to other items that they could do at that location. So please deny this as it should, should be a rezone or a general business, please consider that. Also, the, the noise factor, of course, that will generate a lot of noise because we can sit on our porch or go on a walk and we can hear people a long ways away. Sure, if you're at that event, you, you know, there's no noise other than what's around you, but if you're a neighbor, you're going to hear it because sound travels. The county road maintenance on that, the county cannot maintain that, it's horrible. The flooding on that road is horrible, from the cattle guard north of that property all the way to Ash Creek at times is a river, it's just water, floodwater, and it raises up to two foot that you have to go drive your vehicle at least half mile or more to get to Ash Creek, which is running as well. It's a major wash that comes out of the, the Little Rincon and Happy Valley. There are safety issues with that. And, and as I said, the county can't even maintain the road as it is, so we wish you take that into consideration as well. The, the errors on the application stating the city Benson Fire Department was, would respond is in error. The city maintenance of the road is in error. There was forty acres and then there was a hundred and eight acres in error. And
Thank you, Ms. Gigglin. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak to this matter?
Is there anyone online that would like to speak on this docket?
Hearing none, I this commission has received two letters of support and eight letters of opposition prior to the meeting. This is the time for the applicant's response, you may take five minutes to respond to anything you've heard. Okay. As you can see, there's a lot of neighbor opposition and we understand the concerns that they have. However, I'm very confused at the tone and the energy of the neighbors in this, they were given ample time to contact us with direct email and phone numbers. None of the, two neighbors reached out to us, we did, we were able to email one back, we saw the information for the other as we were putting this information together for this meeting. There's a lot of, of attitude of we got rid of the Dude Ranch. I'm not sure what's happening with that, but you can definitely see that this is a kind of pitchfork type of attitude that is, is really uncalled for. We are being very welcoming, very open and our right on this property is twenty-five homes without special use. It is RU four, so if you break those up into the RU four parcels by right, we are allowed twenty-five homes with accessory dwellings, that makes fifty homes that can be on that property, that's not what we're hoping to do. What we're doing in this special use permit process is stopping, whether it's us, whether it's our, our future generations that are going to inherit the ranch, we want to make sure that what we're doing here can be overseen by government officials, can, can say, hey, you know what, you can't open an RV park, you can't do those things, we are doing these things correctly peacefully and respectfully with our neighbors, so that way they understand this is what this is going to grow into, however, it is in no way intended to harm, but yet enrich your property values, the events that you can come to attend. Many of the things that, that are already happening on their own properties. There are several commercial businesses that are run from the properties that are just our, our neighboring properties. There's a rental business that happens, that those trucks travel up and down. A neighbor grows alfalfa hay, which you can imagine how that depletes their water source. We are being, we have put details into our plan that shows drip systems, responsible water harvesting, all of the steps that you can imagine taking to be responsible and respectful of the land that we are hoping for. In regards to are we the owners of the property, we are not the owners of the property, we made that very clear on the application. We actually had to go and get signatures from the owners of the property to allow us to have this meeting, which will permanently change the, the designation of their land, even if we end up not buying the property. So we're working in conjunction with these people to help to make this vision come to life and I'm a little bit overwhelmed by the tone and hope, and trying to come back down to know at the end of the day, this is meant to be a place for people to come, have community, have rest, have quiet. At the slide that we showed you guys, that, that ranch, my husband was very surprised to find that some of the people that were there in the water with him said, I'm going to go take a nap. my husband was very surprised to find that some of the people that were there in the water with him said, I'm gonna go take a nap. He said, came on vacation to take a nap? And that's, that's what I'm hoping to create. Come and take a break from the loudness, the noise, all of these things. And in regards to the noise, our neighbors did just mention all of the noise that's gonna be coming up. Several of them, many of whom we had a side conversation with who were not in opposition, ride their four-wheelers up and down that road, which is very loud, gas-powered, trucks coming up and down with hay, cotton, I believe, as well, that are further north of the property, create just as much. So I would ask that if you are reviewing the information that we're presenting to you in the right respectable manner, you also review the information, the, the conduct that's happening already in those areas. I know that you could hear the snickering and the laughing and the comments that you clearly put as ground rules not to take place. There was clapping when they, they walked away. This is a cult-style ambush and it's, it's not correct.
Just another side fact, I don't know where it came from, but somebody spread a rumor that this is gonna be a nudist colony.
Nobody came up here to speak on that.
It's all just rumors and they're just really.
You guys have two responses there from a neighbor that says that it's gonna be a nudist colony. Several conversations that have come about of all of these things. It's just people who are afraid of change, which is understandable. But that's why people like us put these meetings and these presentations together so that we can welcome it together and make great things for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you for responding. The public portion is now closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Questions of the applicant or staff?
I will have a question or two.
Mr. Montgomery, go first.
I will. And first of all, I would like to mention that at the very beginning of every commission meeting, the rules are established clearly by the chair lady. And behavior that you mentioned will not be tolerated here. Rumors and such will not be entertained at the commission level. So you can be safe with that as far as we're concerned. Now, I will say also, you have made a, an excellent comprehensive reply to concerns about your project. What is it, nine, ten pages here? And it did address every single question that just now came before us in detail. This is, uh, well, this is a good explanation of concerns. I wonder if anybody else has access to it. If not, maybe that would be helpful. Uh, on another thing, if staff, if I could ask a couple of photos to be put up, starting with page nine. And I'm gonna go up to twelve or thirteen, okay? Views of the property, which especially coming around to page eleven. Okay, this, this is a very beautiful property. On page twelve, it is well organized and maintained, quite obviously. Thirteen, same, same situation, very well done, very well organized and maintained. And page fourteen, the same. Fifteen, there, there's, there's no debris or trash or any unsightly evidence on any of this property. And I am impressed by it. We don't always see that here at the commission. And with that in mind, I have no reason to believe that Robles, Ms. Robles' project would be anything other than the excellence that we're seeing on page twelve, please? I mean, there's nothing wrong with that. And the short video that you displayed for us was a suggestion. I get that. But are you willing to tell us that that would be the level of performance that you would have? So I believe that. And, and you are also, it says here, owners of an excavation company. And are you in talks with the City of Benson about road maintenance? Would you, could you come up, please, hon? Thank you.
It is in the proposal or are not in talks yet because of the fact that we don't own the property. We are, we are purchasing the property.
Okay. Do you have any reason to think that they'll wanna talk to you about that?
I hope they will because we were, we're more than happy to maintain the roads.
Good. But you do have excavation equipment and you'd be able to maintain a road?
A full fleet.
Okay, periodically grade and stabilize the road yourselves?
Correct.
Okay. At no cost to the neighbors or to the county?
Correct.
Okay. And one gentleman suggested that the county would have nothing to do with that, but it says nothing in here about asking the county. And you have now just said that you could do it yourself.
Correct. I believe that this gentleman that did mention about the grading does periodically take on some of the grading himself. There are other people aside of the county officials that maintain that road.
And you have mentioned that other properties around that property already have commercial operations in place.
They do.
So there'd be no difference here. Um, as far as noise, you have addressed in your pamphlet a couple of times that it would be directed away from the neighborhoods and with sound barriers in place that you also indicated.
Right. But most of the noise will actually be in the event center. So it's not like we're gonna have blaring speakers outside. It's gonna be inside. There will be, people could go outside and, and when they're having a wedding, a venue, when it's outside, noise is gonna be inside. And then it's like building as much as possible to eliminate kind of vibrations.
So you will take measures to control the noise?
Definitely.
And we all know from living in the rural areas that a lot of trees are also a sound barrier. They do a pretty good job of muffling noise. And if you can enhance that with other efforts, I think that would be adequate. You're not looking to blast?
No.
Rammstein?
Oh, no.
Yes, ACDC on that.
That includes. You're just trying to bring people together. Marriages have, it's Christian-based place. It's, it's, it's a tranquil place to come and enjoy nature.
Part of having the, a venue of your own is the fact that you can decline clients. And if I, if there's somebody that comes to me that is looking for a playground of a wedding and, you know, let's have a rodeo and this and that, I'm sorry, our place is not for you.
We frequently have to mention at the commission hearings, meetings that there are noise ordinances in Cochise County.
Correct.
And they are enforceable by the county sheriff generally in a sheriff's territory. Speaking of the sheriff, Cochise County is a big place, over three thousand square miles. And I know that the county sheriff will have to address places that are more than eight miles away that are not currently covered. It's just common. We all know that.
To speak on that note, if I may, there's a lot of information that we just couldn't put into the application. But as far as having events, I come from the funeral industry. Twelve years in the funeral industry as a funeral director. Part of having a, a wedding larger than any particular, larger than fifty people, our, our customers will be required to have security. Have a security because you're gonna have drinks, you're gonna have X amount of people. And so it's just best standard practice to have all of these items in place rather than getting there and, and having something take place and then having to backtrack. So we have best practices.
Two more quick things then, I think I can be done. One, opposition is worried about large numbers of people, up to five hundred people. I, I, that's a large number of people. I have promoted gatherings of five hundred people myself. Could you possibly give us an estimate of a typical crowd it would have?
We are building the facility to accommodate up to two hundred people. That means ample space for the guests who have a hundred, for the micro weddings that have twenty-five, fifty. Rural weddings, the, the type that we are hoping to have and only a specific number of, per year, because weddings is, is, is a tough business to be in, need to be small. We, we as an operation can't handle large weddings. We don't want destination weddings. We want clients who come to have their immediate wedding party, be able to stay with them and have a memorable experience for a lesser dollar amount than you would having two hundred people in a city. Let's bring fifteen, twenty people, thirty people out with us, have them lodge here, have a memorable weekend instead of two hundred and fifty guests that you're feeding, providing drinks to, so.
Our largest wedding would probably be a hundred and fifty people, if that. I mean, that's like really pushing it. We wouldn't even have a model close to that amount of people.
And to say that we are gonna have a hundred and fifty guest count, those would be very limited per year.
Yes, okay. One more thing. Concerns about water, we hear that every single month here, almost every single application is a concern about water. There are sometimes worries expressed here that they're gonna use all the water and whatever. But no evidence is ever presented that way. And no evidence was presented today that way. I, I can't see that there is any evidence about that. Water should be secured. I think we're doing fine with water in Cochise County, believe it or not. And we have evidence to prove that. So one last thing, you started your rebuttal with a number of twenty-five. You're eligible for twenty-five homes on that property?
Correct.
Yes, without any specials. You can go. Okay.
We're, we're the accessory buildings, we'll make it fifty.
Permanent.
I wanna thank you for your presentation today. It's very excellent, very comprehensive and precise and detailed. And we don't often get that here.
Thank you.
So I am impressed with your, with your effort.
Thank you.
Wish you luck.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Gonzalez?
I have a few comments. You know, I wanna thank you also for taking the time and the thought process to put this presentation together. I'm impressed with it. And it's the kind of thing that fits well in Cochise County. I see it as an economic benefit, not only to your property, but the surrounding properties. Uh, I don't see it as a drain on any natural resources. You say agriculture, but you're really planning on growing specialty crops with sophisticated irrigation systems, drip and so forth. Uh, I don't see any negative impacts on wildlife or flooding or anything like that. The road concerns that you have are normal. We hear it at every meeting. We also hear when a applicant, applicant comes forth and tries to do a land change, whether it's four acres or the word venue, all of a sudden they find out they have a lot of neighbors that are self-appointed experts that have visions of Woodstock and noise and all that. When they actually live next to a train deal. Noise is part of life. Cochise County is big and there's a lot of room for a lot of folks. I see your presentation and I see as an improvement. We need more of that in Cochise County. It's a big place. And it's not detrimental for anybody. I like the educational part of it where you're gonna bring kids. They're gonna do something healthy and that kind of thing. So I wish you well and buy the property if you can. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders, anything?
Yes, I have a couple. I don't quite understand why it's a hundred and eight acres and then it's only application for forty acres. Yeah, I don't understand that.
The entire property is a hundred and eight acres because we are limiting the activities to the lower portion. We applied for the special use on that.
The bottom forty.
So that's where the homes, the tiny homes, the event center, um, all of those items will take place and so.
Can you pull up site plan of the?
Yeah, I saw the map.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to verify the show that.
So the property is a hundred and eight acres.
The top portion is sixty.
But the special use applies to the forty.
Then the other thing you had brought up earlier, I don't think it's in the City of Benson area. I think it's quite a ways out of the City of Benson.
No. It's still considered Benson. The address is still Benson. But it is, it is quite a bit north.
And it is on a, a non-county maintained road?
It's a county maintained road. It's right before state land.
Oh, it is county maintained.
It is.
And on your, on your site plan, you show a natural wedding pool?
A waiting pond?
Wait, is that what you're waiting pond?
Yeah.
How big is that? That looks like a big lake.
I think that arena is about three hundred by two hundred?
Two hundred by three hundred.
Oh, is that existing?
No.
About twenty-five hundred, twenty-five home. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Watkins?
Well, one of them got answered. I'm just gonna ask, what is a natural wedding? So I get, I still read wedding, not. Do you plan on residing on the property?
We do.
Where at?
Uh, up on the north park.
Okay, that is not actual part of the special use.
It is not.
Application, okay. Uh, what about employees?
They will also reside there. So we have a fa, a, a large family who support us. Uh, we have three grown children, two which will be there as ranch hands. And as a baker for some of the items. Um, our brother will also be living and, and my brothers who live in Tucson will come to and from to assist in all of the activities, the ranching, the farming and getting things up to park.
And as somebody who resides with somebody who's very knowledgeable about county roads and stuff, don't even ask Benson, you're not in the city limits, they have no jurisdiction.
Okay.
The county may help you. I can guarantee that. What about liquor license?
No.
No, so.
Maybe you, you mentioned drinks.
They could bring their own. They'll hire a bartender and they bring their own drinks.
So it must be a license? Because you can, um, you can apply for a permit for your event. So you can apply for a liquor or a, a drink, a beer license for your event. And as long as you have a licensed bartender serving, you can do that. So it would alleviate us having to have a liquor license or want to be in the business of liquor selling.
It would be like a mobile bar that come in with the bartender?
There's actually two companies in Benson who are on mobile bar. They kind of redone, um, like a horse trailer. And they're very excited to partner with us on our property.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Limbach?
Uh, just to clarify, your application indicates the sale of the property is one hundred percent contingent on the issuance of the special use permit. Is this correct? That was the last line of your application?
Yes, um, it is contingent for the plan that we're doing for this application. But if, if this is not passed, then, you know, there's other routes and methods for us to, to figure out.
Services that we can offer with.
Right now, I'm only talking about this application.
Yeah, so this application is con, is contingent for this.
Have you ever resided in this area?
Not in this area. Um, I have not resided in Benson. I've resided in Safford and Wilcox.
So I guess what I'm trying to get at is a lot of these people spend a lot of money for their peaceful environment. And it sounds like in recent years, I was kind of disrupted with the business. So I'm just hoping you can understand their apprehension.
Absolutely.
And this is, in my opinion, a large-scale project.
This is what? I'm sorry?
A large-scale project for this area, I think.
Okay.
When you're talking about a hundred and fifty, possibly up to a hundred and fifty people at a wedding, that could be, you know, three hundred vehicles. Well, one hundred and fifty people, I'm sorry.
That'd be half.
Scratch that, scratch that. I'm thinking one fifty cars. I do appreciate the fact that you have gone out of your way to come up with mechanisms to mitigate some of the complaints. Realistically, I don't think it's possible to mitigate all of them. I myself, in my sixty-one years, have never attended a quiet wedding. Doesn't matter if it's twenty people or two hundred people. So personally, I cannot ignore the concerns of the neighbors. But that's it for my comments and questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ms. Pickett. Do you have any questions?
Okay.
I will add one more.
Mr. Montgomery, go ahead.
I do agree with other commissioners today that this would be an improvement to the area. It fits right in. And again, the business that's, or that's already there is, is a.
a beautiful presentation, and I think this fits right in with it. As for quiet, is there a scientific definition for that word? It would be subjective, wouldn't it?
Legal.
And it, yes, and if it was too noisy, as was feared earlier, we discussed that there are noise codes in the county enforced by law. I don't think the celebration of life and marriage and happiness is offensive to people, and would hope that they would have many of those launch into their new lives, married people by swimming in the marriage, the wedding pond, is that beautiful? Okay, so, I think that we should, I have said before, ma'am and commissioners, we should inspire people to, to attempt businesses like this in Cochise County and improve our lot here overall, because with many wedding guests will come many wedding dollars to Benson and Cochise County, and I think that can only be a good thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners, I do have one question for you, if you don't mind. You mentioned several types of attendees to your venue, shall we call it, you described the weddings, good. Can you also tell me what you would be doing with the guest lodging the other times? Will you rent them long-term? What, what do you visualize your traffic? Describe to me a year's worth of traffic, how many weddings, how many people living there for a month?
I'm sorry to have the plan, for, for weddings, we can generously say now, one a month for the first two years.
So that's what you visualize handling, one a month?
Yes, we really hope to downscale that eventually, because like I said, weddings is a very, you know, women want their days to be perfect, and especially on a ranch, things are not always perfect, so we go towards, more towards lodging. That will be kind of an Airbnb style with a minimum amount of nights of stays, and just for, just for retreat type of experience. We also have in mind corporate events, so, you know, where you do team building and you come out and you participate in something together. We have photographers and yoga friends who would like to come and have morning sunrise yogas there, just, just a lot of events that have folks come out together, especially, I mean, Benson is quite away from Tucson, even more so from Phoenix, that is some of the traffic that I'm, that I'm hoping to bring in, but as a group, family reunions, corporate events, retreats, churches, school field trips, things like that, where it's not so much of the twenty people that are coming, they're all coming in twenty different cars, you know, vans, maybe like a bus type of thing, but staying together for a number of nights on the property, knowing that you're staying on the property and not having traffic back and forth every day of their stay.
And these won't be long-term stays, like Airbnb, two, two to seven days max, it's kind of in and out, people come and experience it. As far as traffic, I would buy, I mean, people-wise.
The estimation that we put in, in the proposal, we believe is very accurate for the type of events and guests that we're, we're holding and for the minimum stay, so you, you can't come and stay just a day, you'd have to come and stay three days. That, that would limit, you know, the on and off traffic for that, and, and once we're at capacity, we're at capacity, there's no, you know.
There's no desire to keep going, 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 get, and fill this up, it's, just, we're not going to be able to handle it.
So you'll build out, you'll be done?
Yeah, we want to just make sure, hey, this is enough people, we already have the numbers figured out, this will be more than enough to cover everything for us, we can live good, pay for what we have to pay for, but yet, we're bringing people to enjoy the land.
As a way for us to make a living by working our, our own land every single day.
Thank you, thank you very much. Commissioners, anything else? So I think it's time for Mr. Taylor to give us a summary and recommendation.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners, one point of clarification, we've identified the entirety of the property, which consists of three parcels, totally totaling a hundred and eight acres. The applicants are seeking the special use for the southerly forty acres, and those would be tax parcels two zero eight, two eight zero zero one November, and zero zero one Papa, so that would be the forty acres subject to the specific use, or the special use authorization. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of docket SU twenty-five-eighteen to allow guest lodging with events and outdoor recreation, subject to the following conditions: Outdoor activities after ten PM shall be conducted indoors. The main access point will be upgraded to a dual lane entrance exit to, to support better flow and reduce congestion. Dust suppression methods will be used during events and in dry seasons. Obtain approvals from the Cochise County Environmental Health Division and/or Arizona Department of Environmental Quality and/or any required upgrades or expansions to the existing wastewater system. No more than fifteen tiny homes for guest lodging shall be placed on the site. Obtain approval for the location and design of the proposed waiting pool area from the Cochise County Engineering and Natural Resources and Environmental Health Division prior to construction. Additional permits or exemptions from the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality and the Arizona Department of Water Resources may also be required. Remaining standard conditions related to permitting and modifications are still in effect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So we have a motion to vote on, as, to approve SU twenty-five dash eighteen Wild Horse Guest Lodging. Is there any further discussion? I have one clarification. This is, the special use will apply to the forty acres, we will, we will revise the language to reflect forty acres, the lower forty only.
Yes, Madam Chair, the activities identified on the northern sixty-eight acres or so are permissive on our E four, so we will clarify that it's just these two parcels consisting of the forty acres.
Okay, just want to make clear what the special use pertains to, thank you. You ready for a vote? Mr. Saunders?
I'm going to vote no, because I'm concerned the neighbors and the applicant haven't discussed it together enough to understand what you're doing.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes. Hi.
And Ms. Pickett?
I'm kind of concerned about the neighbors also, I vote no.
Mr. Watkins?
Along the same lines, we've had other dockets where more discussions needed between applicants and the neighbors, so at this time, I'm going to vote.
Mr. Montgomery?
Well, I will enthusiastically vote yes to inspire this type of business in Cochise County, and also with the hope that many young people and even older people could start their beautifully wedded lives at the Ever After Ranch in Benson, Arizona, so I am voting yes to approve.
Mr. Limbach?
No, based on the overwhelming objections of the area residents, including traffic, fire, neighborhood character concerns, and I think it is contrary to Trace Alamos Area Plan.
Thank you, the chair is voting no. Although this commission is well aware our county needs economic development, we applaud your plan, we think it is a violation of neighborhood trust and the Trace Alamos Plan. To do this in that area, though, I sure hope that you'll look for another venue more suitable. This motion is denied. Any individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within fifteen days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office Monday through Friday, eight to five, or online at cochise dot AZ dot gov, and I thank you for your patience.
Chair, can you?
We are going to take a five-minute break and then continue.
It's not the last time, sure. Well, I got to hear my.
Let's call us back to order, please. I see Mr. Montgomery's missing.
He's, oh, sorry.
Okay, we'll wait a few more moments. Next stop is SU twenty-five dash nineteen Truck Parking, Eduardo Hinojos, you're going to have to help me with your name. I need a motion to accept the application twenty-five nineteen.
Hi, I'm Claudia Guerra.
Hold on, we'll call you in a moment.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Watkins?
I'm moved to approve docket SU twenty-five dash nineteen with conditions of approval recommended by staff, the factors in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Limbach. We're going to take Mr. Taylor's report first, and then we'll call you right back.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is the staff presentation for docket SU twenty-five nineteen, a special use authorization to allow large truck parking, which would fall in the contract construction services category of the zoning regs. The property is located along King's Highway, the applicant is Eduardo Hinojos, King's Highway west of Douglas and north of Highway eighty, APN four zero seven three four zero six six F. Property is owned rural, the plan designation is also rural, currently, there is no established use of the property currently, and again, the proposed use is to truck, park large trucks. Property is located west of Douglas and about five miles north of Highway eighty. The area is, has a predominant rural residential development pattern, closest residence is to the north, as you can see, that pretty significant feature, that's whitewater draw to the west. The applicants have provided a site plan showing their proposed parking area for the trucks, the applicants do intend to build a house at some point in the future. These are some drawn images of the subject parcel, this would be viewing to the east with King's Highway in the foreground. This would be viewing to the west. This view is to the southwest with the nearest occupied residence in the lower right-hand corner, and that residence is approximately six hundred feet from the subject parcel. This was the closest residence at one point, that's obviously been damaged by fire and is not occupied. Section two point four eight of the zoning regulations identifies ten factors to evaluate special use requests, eight factors apply to this request. One of the concerns would be that this is not a major road, it is a minor collector, it's not a major roadway, nor is it a business corridor. The request does comply with applicable factors with conditions, again, the area has a pretty discernible rural residential development pattern, the applicants are not proposing any permanent commercial buildings, and the applicant's business, it's a local business that supports development. And the applicant's business, it's a local business that supports development at the new commercial port of entry, which they would be hauling around, hauling debris away from the site as those lands are cleared. Factor not in favor, we have received opposition from nearby property owners. The applicant mailed letters on eight May as required by the zoning regulations, and staff noticed this application between 16 and 23 July. Staff mailed 13 notices and we received three responses in opposition. One of the owners has two parcels, so we actually received response from three opposing property owners. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket SU 2519, especially as authorization requests to allow contractor yard with large truck parking. We are available for the commission's questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The applicant is now welcome to speak. Please state your name and address. You have 10 minutes.
Okay, my name is Claudia Higuera. We live in 1950. He's my husband, Eduardo Perez Hinojos. And we live in 1950 12th Street in Angeles, Arizona. And we have a company, a WCC company for truck trackings. And we planning to work in the border line. And they're gonna be the, the border. You're gonna construct the border. And then it's gonna be only five miles away from the work, the trucks. And it's our property. And we have four acres and we planning to park the trucks in two, two acres. That's why we like to permit. And we like to do a house in the future. There's a plan. He doesn't speak English. That's why. Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. We may ask questions of you in a little while.
All right. Thank you.
This is the public portion of the hearing. Call for comments from other persons. Is there anyone online?
Is there anyone online that would like to speak on this docket?
I would.
Hold on, sir. Nothing coming online. Thought we'd see if there was anyone on the air first. You are Mr. Jump.
As I am.
Thank you, sir. You have three minutes.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for your service. Being a county commissioner is not an easy job. And I was even more impressed that you're doing it pro bono. At least the council could give you some candy for Christmas or something. My wife and I live at 6450 North King's Highway. It's rural residential. And we think it should stay that way, and we're very strongly opinionated on that. I understand a conditional use permit allows certain things to happen, and this is one of them. And one of the things that's happening here, and I'm sure you guys are more involved in this than I am, but much of what's going on in our neighborhood is associated with the port of entry that's being built on the border. And that's not public. I mean, well disseminated. You don't, you know what's going on. You could drive around and see all kinds of roads and see all kinds of notices. Utilities are gonna come from the city possibly, but that's not set. So what we're doing here is we're doing a conditional use permit to allow parking for construction equipment that's gonna be used on the border, but we don't know the final plan on the border. And my wife and I have talked about this a great deal. If there's just four acres and they put heavy trucks, they're gonna haul waste away, and they're gonna leave at five o'clock in the morning and come back at three, well, I need to give a caution to the drivers because three o'clock's when the school buses come home from school and kids are not really thrilled about being, you know, sitting still when they get off the school bus. They're all over the place, but that's the driver's responsibility, not ours. But it's something, it's a concern. We recognize that this is a set problem. They're gonna be out there for five days a week, from five in the morning until three o'clock, not the weekends. So the noise and those kind of things don't really affect us. It's just that it's so out of character. And when they have the trucks parked there, they can't fuel there because the closest fuels in Douglas are Bisbee. They can't repair their trucks there because that's not what a parking lot is for. You know, it's just, it doesn't make a lot of sense. They should be closer on industrial property to the actual construction site where they're gonna be used. If they have to go back and forth, it's gonna be expensive. It's gonna cause some disruption. And granted, you know, it's not gonna end my enjoyment of my life, but it's gonna have an impact that we don't think is appropriate for rural residential, and we ask that it be looked at very closely. And we had some conditions that we'd like to see put on it. It's not a construction yard, it's a parking lot. And the construction yard, nomenclature, our reference is wrong. It shouldn't be in there. They shouldn't be allowed to have major fueling there. I don't wanna see a 500-gallon tanker pull in there and start fuel.
Thank you, sir.
You heard most of it. Thank you.
Yes, we have. Thank you. The applicant can respond at this time?
I don't know now the time, but it's gonna be sometimes Monday to Thursday only. It's gonna be 10 hours working, 40 hours a week. And it's only, they're gonna leave and then they're gonna come. It's gonna be two, only two ways. And they're only gonna, there's only gonna be a parking lot. It's gonna be, it's not gonna be noise. The, the workers are gonna park the truck, the truck, and they're gonna leave. It's not gonna be noise and nothing. And also, they're gonna take care about the kids and everything. They're gonna drive slowly. Yeah, it's not gonna affect, nothing of that. Hmm, uh, yeah, I think it's not a working place, but we're gonna work there. It's only be a parking lot. I think that is not affect nobody. And the noise is gonna be just in the morning, turn on the trailers and leave and come back like three or four or five. We don't know what time they're gonna call us to work, but I think it's five to three or six to four or seven to five. Thank you.
Thank you. The public portion is now closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Questions for the applicant or staff?
My name was on the list.
Oh. Do you? Go ahead and tell us your name and address, sir. Three minutes.
Okay, my name is David Bond. I sent in a letter. I signed that paper out there. I expect to be heard. I thank you for the opportunity. My property is on that map, on that picture up there, close to the house. And I own 48 acres there. My 48 acres will be devalued when they park a bunch of trucks on four acres next to the road. King's Highway was never meant for industrial purposes. It's a rural area. Mr. Hinojo will undoubtedly scrape off the natural vegetation and expose this property to dust and to water erosion. My property is down slope from this development and closer than 300 yards to this development. In my opinion, there are better locations for this type of development, such as on Highway 80. This parking lot will increase heavy truck traffic on King's Highway. And as far as I know, there's no limitation to how long this parking lot will be allowed. It'll be there 10 years with rusting trucks. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else I've missed? Shall we go back to commission discussion, please? Anyone have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Saunders.
I don't quite understand. Is it a construction yard or a truck parking?
The trucks.
And there's only how many trucks?
Uh, gonna be six.
Six total?
Uh huh.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, question?
Mr. Gonzalez? You should stay up here if you like.
You said you own the property, right?
Yes.
You own four acres?
Yes.
You're gonna use two.
Yes, we do. We can, yeah, we're gonna construct a house in the future.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, go ahead and say. One more.
Mr. Watkins?
Uh, are you visualizing something like what's across from Tractor Supply right now? Where they're parking trucks and trailers?
To what?
In Douglas, across from Tractor Supply, there's a truck parking lot.
Yeah.
Is this what you're envisioning? Is it gonna be fenced and secure?
Yeah, it's gonna be secure.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be secure. I think we roll the thing. It's gonna be secure.
Is, are these trucks gonna be loaded going from down?
No, they don't have, they're gonna be empty.
And there's no refueling?
No, nothing. It's gonna be empty. They're gonna go work and then come back home. It's gonna be empty trucks.
Because, yeah, King's Highway cannot handle that kind of weight.
Yeah, that, that's gonna be empty trucks, not loading.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Oh, it was Mr.?
Oh, no, I know. Can you describe the type and the height of the fencing that you're looking to? Yes, the, the type of fencing and the height.
Type of, the height's gonna be the, I think it's six, six, six foot.
So it won't necessarily obstruct the view of the trucks. You'll still see.
It's gonna be secured.
No, but I mean, as far as my, my ability or neighbors, neighbors can still see your trucks, correct?
Oh, yeah, exactly, yeah. They, they can see it.
And will the fencing have security screening? Okay. And then what types of trucks are we talking about? Are they?
The same line trucks.
But they're, so they're all the same?
Yes, they're gonna be the same.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a little question. Are these all trucks? Are these box trucks? What, what kind of trailer are these trucks pulling?
It's gonna be for the, how do you say it? Belly dumps?
Okay.
Yeah, but the belly dump is gonna stay. Uh huh, it's only the trucks.
Enlighten us, Nathan.
Oh, belly dump. Dumps load from the belly. You fill it up and then haul it out and dump it over. Small and small, well.
Okay.
Certainly, really dirt from port of entry.
Yeah, they're gonna work over that, huh?
Madam Chair.
Okay.
My family. I just wanna thank you. It's gratifying to see young people trying to do something to make a living out in that area.
Yeah, it's gonna be a work for a lot of people, for six, six drivings.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, it's gonna be something for the future, for Douglas and for King's Highway. We try to do something for the future.
Thank you, Brooklyn. And with that, Chair Lady, I will second that emotion.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
Of endeavors for people to make a living in Cochise County, invest their own time and money and risk to do such a thing.
Yeah, we're trying to stay in Douglas, not to go away to Phoenix or Tucson. Stay in Douglas, make money in Douglas and grow.
That's right.
Grow Douglas.
Because none of this is guaranteed. You have to work hard to make it work.
Yes.
And we appreciate that very much. At least some of the commissioners appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make one more comment, just general comment. The port of entry is changing the whole character of that whole area. And it's something that we're, we can control to a point, which we have. People have rezoned property all on the south side, and I knew it was gonna eventually start on the north.
Yeah.
And King's Highway. I unfortunately think there's gonna be truck traffic on King's Highway going to Double Dobie, heading north instead of going down to 190.
Yes, also here, they're gonna use the King Highway to build bigger, to something like that.
Yeah. Well, that's.
And the meetings we go.
That's just something that we have to look forward to.
Yes.
Hopefully, we can control.
Mm-hmm.
Do you currently own the trucks?
Yes, we do.
Where are they parked now?
In St. Phoenix.
Oh, okay.
I have, we have two in Douglas. We have a, a small commercial.
And so you own the trucks, you hire the drivers?
Yes.
So you have control over their behaviors?
We do.
Okay. And, um, oh. I wondered why you made the parking lot in the back of the property. I noticed there's, maybe staff can help with this. There's a floodplain in the front, but you say you intend to build a house there anyway. Why wouldn't you park them out front to reduce dust and intrusion?
We can, we can park in the front if we want. We can do it.
It's not.
But we, I think it's, it's better for us to do, build that thing that park in the back and then in the future do the house like.
More secure.
Yeah, more, yeah, because in the front, I think it's, I don't know. I don't know. We, we designed that and we decided to put it in the back.
I was just wondering if it would help the neighbor not object if you were out roadside rather than deep into the parcel? Just, just a thought. And then clarify why this says it is intended to be of a temporary nature. Are you not gonna continue this business once you live there?
Um, maybe, yeah, we're gonna continue. Yeah, why not? We can, we're gonna do it like for six, eight years in Douglas. When the, the borders is gonna be like eight years working in Douglas, we're gonna have work for eight years. And we planning to stay in Douglas to work.
Okay. I don't know about that temporary language in our.
Yeah, because the motor in that, the trucks motor is gonna be three years to building. And then the other one is gonna be three years. The cars, they're gonna be doing bigger. And then they're gonna do the highways and everything is gonna be like a year and a half to. It's gonna be eight years for work.
You've looked into all that impressive. So I had one more question that's probably just really outside the box. It looks like there's a power line running down the center of the property. Was there a power line that went to the burnt house? Are there power poles on your property?
I don't see it.
Okay. See right there?
No, no.
Along the front of the property.
Well, it's cross, it crosses King's Highway and then there's power poles there. You can kinda see them.
I think it's a, but it's not a line.
Okay. Because that might be a conflict. That easement might cause you some trouble.
Yeah, because I don't see a line to the power line. No, I don't see a power line over there.
Okay. Take a look next time.
Oh, yeah, I do. I'm gonna.
Yeah. All right, anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
For your.
Mr. Taylor, your recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of docket SU 2519 to allow a contractor yard for large truck parking, subject to the following conditions. County right-of-way and clearing permits are required. No more than six large trucks onsite at a time. Internal driveways and parking loading areas shall be treated with two-inch gravel or other stabilizing material to reduce dust. No onsite loading or loading of, unloading of materials. Onsite fueling and maintenance are prohibited. Parking and storage areas shall be fenced and perimeter vegetation shall be retained. Parking loading areas is a phrase out of the zoning regulations. The applicant has indicated they, they do not intend to do any loading, loading or offloading onsite, and that is prohibited in the conditions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion open for vote. SU, vote of approval of SU 2519. Mr. Limbach, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye, to approve.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Vicket?
Aye.
And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Chair also votes aye. This is approved. Any individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office Monday through Friday 8 to 5 or online at cochise dot az dot gov. Congratulations. And finally, we have docket R 2503 regarding accessory dwelling units. Ms. McLaughlin. I'm sorry, we need the motion. I forget my own.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
I move to recommend approval of docket R 25-03 to the Board of Supervisors, amending text of the Cochise County zoning regulations as outlined in Exhibit A.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Now, Ms. McLaughlin, please.
Good evening. This is docket R 2503. It's a staff-initiated text amendment to the zoning regulations, specifically impacting the regulation of accessory dwellings countywide. Broadly speaking, this amendment will expand flexibility, increase housing capacity, and bring the code into alignment with Arizona's recent ADU legislation, which is now state law. ARS 11810.01 became law on May 23, 2025, following the passage of House Bill 2928. The intent of House Bill 2928 was to establish consent. The intent of House Bill 2928 was to establish a consent, a consistent statewide framework for county permitting of accessory dwelling units or ADUs. On this slide and the next, I list specific changes to our regulations. Two of the most important things to note relate to applicability. Accessory dwellings will not be permitted on a lot where a single-family dwelling is permitted. So this will impact accessory dwelling allowances in seven of our zoning districts, RU, RSMS, SR, MR, and BGB. On each lot, in addition to one single-family home, one attached and one detached ADU will be permitted. This increases by one if the parcel is at least one acre in size. In terms of development standards, the ADUs can be up to 75% of the size of the principal structure, but it's still capped at 1,000 square feet, and we are limited to imposing five-foot setbacks for the ADUs. We will allow multiple mailboxes, park model RVs, if the property is at least three acres and zoned RU4, SR, or SM 174. We will remove rental restrictions and make a couple process changes. Use deviation, for example, commercial and ADU would require commission approval, as it is currently. Deviation from site development standards would go to the Board of Adjustments. This is most often the case where we have an applicant who wants to exceed the overall size cap. And that concludes my presentation. This is a public hearing. As applicant, I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? None?
Yes, I have one question. On a, say it's a four-acre lot, how many ADUs are allowed?
They would allow one attached and up to two detached in that case.
Ms. McLaughlin, how does this change our workload? The variance board will be taking over some of our ALQ duties.
Yes, it would be, for example, if somebody wants to do, they currently have a 1,500-square-foot home on their property, they want to do an accessory dwelling unit that's 1,200 square feet, that would go before the Board of Adjustments instead of this, this board.
And so they're still required to pull a permit, just like any other?
Correct. But it would be a variance instead of a special use.
Right. Mr. Watkins?
I was just saying, I vote aye.
That's nice.
But if we can pass our work to somebody else, that's all of it.
Mr. Limbach?
ADUs are permitted accessory uses on any lot or parcel where a single-family dwelling is permitted, including at least one attached and one detached. So to me, that sounds like it could be greater. It could, it looks, with the language, at least one attached or one detached. Am I reading it wrong? Could that mean possibly more?
It could be, and that's the case if it were one acre or greater, then you could have two detached structures.
So there is a cap, though?
There is a cap.
Okay.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion on the floor? Let's go to vote. Mr. Limbach, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye, to approve.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Vicket?
Aye.
And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
And the chair is a troublemaker. I have a statement. My vote is no. Of course, I'm not voting no to this docket of code updates per se. That's useless. Staff has brought us the changes that must be implemented by a newly passed state law. My no vote is civil protest. I consider HB 2928 unconstitutional as it removes our right as a county to govern our lands as we see fit. No. This motion passes. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for taking a stand.
Long stand, but never be.
Well, later.
Look at baby anonymous.
Can't have that.
Yeah.
All right, Planning Directors' report, please.
Thank you for hanging on. This was a long meeting. Next month will be long as well. But prior to that, on September 2nd, we have rezoning 2507, rezoning 2509, rezoning 2510, rezoning 2511, and this latest text amendment will all go to the Board of Supervisors. So tune in for that. Planning and Zoning Commission in September, we have the three tabled items, so the subdivision and a two billboard, special uses. We have a proposed RV park special use. We have a charitable service special use. We have an ALQ. And this is the case where it exceeds the maximum size requirement. The proposed amendment has not gone into place, so that particular item will come before you guys. We'll have a marijuana dispensary special use. And we'll have a downzoning in sun sites to 174, SR 174. We'll have a rezoning and possibly one other text amendment. So a very, very full docket.
Serving the dinner.
Thank you. Thank you again for, for coming this month and for, for all your hard work. It's really appreciated.
And thank you for yours as well.